Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the October 30th, Monday edition of the Board of Selectmen Highway Commissioners Cemetery Commissioners Meeting. This meeting is being recorded. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, acceptance of minutes, 10-223 Executive Session and 10-1623. Mr. Marcy.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the October 2nd, 2023 Executive Session Minutes as written.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the October 16th, 2023 Minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Next on the agenda, welcome back Student Representative Vanessa Bakloski, Senior at Shepherd Hill.
Hi, thank you for having me back. I'm very excited to be serving for a second year this year. So recently at Shepherd Hill, NHS recently hosted The Haunting on the Hill. That was last Friday and it was very successful. We had a lot of kids come in and dressed up in many costumes. It was great to see and great to be there. Our first quarter is ending on Friday, which means I'll be one-fourth done with senior year, which is scary and nerve-wracking and everyone's in the process of applying to college, which is also very stressful. Winter sports signups have just opened, so we'll be starting our winter season at Shepherd Hill very shortly. And then a few weeks ago, on October 5th, we hosted the Senior Sunrise, which was a very successful event. I think we had around 90% of the senior class present, which I think was our most present event as a class, which was fantastic to see everyone having such unity as a senior class. So there's been a lot of great events happening at Shepherd Hill recently. So it's been great to report on that for you.
Thank you. Welcome back Vanessa.
Thank you.
Good to have you back.
Thank you. I'm excited to be back.
Good stuff. Next on the agenda, citizen comments. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on something that is not on this evening's agenda? Seeing no one, on to the next. Town Administrators Report. Mr. Ruta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been reminded I have to speak into the mic. On November 6th, as we've been discussing, the Town Hall will reopen five days a week. It'll be Monday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. for the second floor offices. Tuesday through Thursday is 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and Friday is 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And there may be some variation in that schedule, so we encourage people to visit the individual department websites. But those are the core hours for the building. Again, it's November 6th. Monday will be 8:00 a.m. to 6:30 for the second floor offices. Tuesday through Thursday, 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. and Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Michelle has also enlisted Chief Coach Janowski to provide a CPR class and training for the Town Hall staff at the fire station on Friday, December 8th, 2023, and Friday, December 15th, for those who aren't able to attend from 8:00 a.m. to noon. All Town employees and library staff will be eligible to take that training. Are we doing AED as well?
Yes.
Sorry. And you'll notice in each hallway, AED and CPR. Thanks, Chief. So if you notice in the hallways, we have the automatic defibrillators that we have to refresh ourselves on how to use. That's so that we could have an employee respond to a situation where someone was having a heart attack and a shock was indicated. They would be trained on how to use those machines and apply the probes and hopefully help save the person. Speaking of training, Michelle Jervis attended a boot camp for Assistant Town Administrators on October 19th. The training was sponsored by the Mass Municipal Association. This training included a review of the Code of Ethics that is based on the International City Management Association's Code of Ethics, which was adopted over 100 years ago and only recently adopted and amended this year. So there were a lot of updates that she was able to get for us and bring back to the office. You know, as our assistant, Michelle has input into every policy and action that I take as Town Administrator, and it's important that her responsibilities and recommendations coincide with what's required of my office and of the Board of Selectmen. So I appreciate her volunteering to go and go ahead and take that class. Last week, I completed the new training that's required for municipal hearing officers that was sponsored by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, along with 52 other municipal hearing officers, which are essentially Town Administrators and Town Managers and code enforcement officials from across the state. So I'm good to go with that. That training's been completed. The town has applied to the Department of Industrial Accidents Office of Safety for a Workplace Safety Grant to provide OSHA training to applicable Town employees. It'll generally be the water, sewer, and highway. This is a $25,000 grant application process was spearheaded by our intern, Olivia, who, as the board recalls, volunteered to do an internship without compensation remotely from her school in Indiana. We should know about the success of that grant application sometime before Christmas. And we've also submitted, Mr. Chairman, for another IT grant, which, as the board recalls, was instrumental in funding the town's cybersecurity strength assessment several years ago. And that's resulted in good program changes that have fortified and strengthened the town's network and their servers. We were able to reinstitute some of our cybersecurity program this year, fortunately, when the voters went ahead and approved three of the five override questions. But it was bare bones, and we're hoping that this grant will be successful in securing some additional funding for us to work on a disaster recovery program that was in the planning phases. As the board knows, the disaster recovery is if we were to lose this building or the police station, we would try to reconstitute our IT infrastructure at the fire department. We would want to obviously train to that and make sure we are ready and equipped to do that, should it become necessary to do that in the future. So part of that grant was written to fund that exercise and that training and to continue on with some important infrastructure improvements to our IT and network system. I'd also like to thank Representative Durant for sending a letter to the Division of Local Services in support of the town's application for that IT grant funding. And, Mr. Chairman, the town is negotiating with Gentex for another one-year agreement to divide the costs and work for the IRA on Eagle Drive, which is the Immediate Response Action in and around the Eagle Drive neighborhood. I'm going to ask Michelle to place the matter on the November 13th, 2023 meeting agenda, excuse me, where I will be asking the Board of Selectmen to once again grant me the authority to work with and negotiate with Town Council and agree to terms with Gentex as to the cost and the work sharing under the DEP's Immediate Response Action. So we're going to meet this week again with Gentex and the next time we meet, we should be in a good place with some sort of negotiated proposed agreement for the next year going forward, shared costs and shared work. And then I'm going to ask for the Board to authorize me to go ahead and negotiate with Town Council and Gentex on the Board's behalf. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the staff that volunteered, which was led by Michelle, to put on another successful Halloween event last week for the kids. And Michelle has some late-breaking details about some holiday events that are coming up in December, and I'll turn it over to her for that.
Okay. Well, Dudley Fire Department in conjunction with the Police Department in the Town Hall are preparing for the Santa run again this year on December 9th, starting at 9:00 a.m. at the Town Hall. Santa will be riding through various neighborhoods along Mrs. Claus, Frosty, and The Grinch. Residents can follow the route on the Glimpse apps. Please understand that Santa will not be able to go down every street, and this will not include dead-end streets. More information will be on our website and on the Facebook page. Also, the annual tree lighting will be Thursday, December 14th, from 6:00 to 7:30, maybe 8:00. It depends on how many people we have here at the Town Hall. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be arriving at 6:00 p.m. in the fire truck. Pizza, hot chocolate, and beverages will be available, along with holiday music from the Shepherd Hill marching beam.
Mr. Chairman, that pretty much ends my report. But I do want to thank, you know, year after year, we have the Halloween activities for the kids and the holiday activities, you know, in the following months. And our staff volunteers. They don't get paid for it. They volunteer after-hours to run these events for the benefit of the community. So I just want to make sure that the Board was aware of that. I know you all are, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge that that's an uncompensated volunteer situation for our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Ruta. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Mr. Chair, I have one about the training for CPR. Now, that's free to all the Town Hall employees, right?
It is.
Okay. And they don't have to use their time for that?
They do it on the clock.
Outstanding. Okay.
Mr. Marcy?
I'll thank Town Administrator and Michelle for updates. Was a good event. Got there a little bit late, but my daughter liked the Spooktacular, so great job there. Looking forward to the next one.
Motion to accept Town Administrators Report.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda, public business, human resource policy adoptions. Mr. Ruta?
Again, Mr. Chairman, these are the same policies that were paid for by the HR grant that we received at the end of last spring, actually. They've all been vetted through Town Council, our Labor Council, and I've been adding them to your agendas a little at a time, so you'd have a chance to look at them before you were asked to vote to accept these policies. So tonight, we have, what do we have for the policies, Michelle?
Workplace injuries policy.
Workplace injuries policy and workplace safety policy. And so what I'd be asking for tonight is the Board's vote to adopt those two policies, so that we can add them to our updated policy manual.
For a separate motion.
Yes, please.
Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the workplace injuries policy as written.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And the next that you want an approval of? Mr. Marcy?
Chairman, I move that we approve the workplace safety policy as written.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. There we go. Next up is the Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony and Santa Tour. I believe we already touched upon that.
Do we want to vote to approve those dates, or?
Would you like that?
Just solid enough to vote to approve?
I think so.
Could you repeat those, please, so that we can get those into motion?
Saturday, December 9th, at 9:00 a.m. it'll begin Santa Tour. And Thursday, December 14th, from 6:00 to sometimes 7:30, 8:00 for the tree lighting.
Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the upcoming Santa Tour to be held on Saturday, December 9th, beginning at 9:00 a.m.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the upcoming Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony to be on Thursday, December 14th, beginning at?
6:00.
6:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, Departmental Communication, Police Chief, report on progress of Animal Control Officer and reorganization of ACO under the Police Department. Good evening.
Good evening. So just a little bit of brief history on the Animal Control Officer position. That was one of the line items that took a hard hit during the budget. It got reduced to zero. I was asked right before July 1st by Mr. Ruta to see if we can help out in any way with the ACO position until the town squares out their funding issues. So I was able to reach out to Southbridge Police Chief Shane Woodson. He lended us the Southbridge ACO to cover the town until mid-August. I then asked Oxford ACO to help cover the town of Dudley to make sure that we meet the requirements set by the state. And then myself and the Town Administrator, we sat down and tried to figure out a plan on what to do, because it was just a Band-Aid. So we came up with a plan to see if any of the police officers want to take over the role as the Animal Control Officer. I sent out an email. I had some interest from some of the officers, and Officer Pacheco was one of the officers that wanted to take over the role. Since then, I have sent Officer Pacheco to a class to be certified as the ACO. We're just waiting for the final paperwork from the state to make sure that we are compliant with local, state, and federal laws. We're trying to retrofit one of the cruisers, so that way it accommodates as a police vehicle and also as an ACO vehicle. Roy's Auto Glass helped us replace the windshield to, the old windshield was, we had some issues with it. They donated the work and the glass to cover that. Shelter, I went in there, cleaned the shelter out. I have a company coming in this Thursday to give me an estimate on deep clean for that shelter. Other than that, there's some issues with the lights, but other than that, it's in decent condition. And Lori Smith has helped me, along with Jackie, with dog citations for this year. We started off with 300 violations. We're down to about 100 right now that unfortunately I had to submit to court, housing court, to make sure that those people registered their dogs. And I'm going to work with Lori and Board of Health to make sure that we update the bylaws, which Officer Pacheco told me that our bylaws are a little bit out of date. So we're going to work on trying to do that. So today, I'm asking the Board to, I'm recommending that Officer Louis Pacheco be appointed by the Board as the Animal Control Officer for the town of Dudley as soon as he gets the certification from the state, which I'm hoping it's either this week or next week. That way, we can take that pressure off the surrounding towns, and we can have somebody in town that will do the job. So that'll be my recommendation to the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the Board?
Just two. Mr. Jim, when the facility building would be ready and when the cruiser would be retrofitted and ready to be put in service?
I'm hoping that the shelter will be ready next week. If I get the estimate this week, I'm hoping that they can go in there, do a deep clean. There was some mold in there that I want to make sure that we're in compliance. And then the cruiser, I'm working with McGovern right now to see if we can try to speed that up. And I'll be also reaching out to Nichols College to maybe help out with any costs that will be incurred to this.
Just so the timeline fits, appointment versus now you have the vehicle to use and the building to use?
I think the biggest thing, too, is I think we'll be ready pretty quick. The biggest thing is, like, right now, if we have an issue with a lost dog, we rely on the neighboring towns to even pick up the dog. This way, we can have Officer Pacheco pick up the dog with best equipment that we have. And then even if the shelter's not ready, we can still house it in other towns. But ultimately, the goal is to have our own shelter, keep it running again, and then have our own ACO that we can provide the services at the town. And the cost, we kept the cost pretty much the same what it was for the last couple of years. And we'll revisit that to see where we are next year.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, again, publicly thank both Officer Pacheco and the Chief for spearheading this, because this is a true example of being efficient. In other words, we're working within the same budget that we formerly had in past years for the ACO and being more effective in doing so. We're more efficient and we're more effective. We now have somebody 40 hours a week providing ACO services on top of regular patrol duties in a manner which I think is better controlled, and I think that it's under the right heading with, under public safety, under the Police Department. And there was a lot of step-up from the Police Department in order to get this done. So I really appreciate the Chief and Officer Pacheco stepping forward to do this.
Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, guys, teamwork as always. You coming together and figuring out how to solve the problem. Yeah, I love it. So Chief, thanks for that. And Officer Pacheco, thanks for stepping up as always. So glad, thanks for doing that.
Anyone else? Anything?
What's the Board's pleasure?
Like to make a motion to appoint Officer Louis Pacheco to the ACO position.
Second.
Motion and two seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations and thank you.
Thanks for doing that.
Both. Thank you.
And while I'm here, I'm just going to continue with the Department of Communication. Some of the residents on Center Road over the weekend might have seen a lot of police activity near Nichols College. We had a large fight. Our officers were dispatched. We only had two officers working. The fight, initial fight, came in. There was probably about 50, 60 people involved. We called Webster. All of the Webster cruisers were tied up, because they send them to us. State Police showed up. As a result, I believe three individuals ended up going to a hospital. We are investigating it, but I just wanted to make sure that, I know we had a shooting in that area earlier this year, and the residents know that we're working on it. We're going to get to the bottom of what transpired there, and then we'll pursue charges if need be. But Nichols is working with us, cooperating with us on this issue. So I'll be reaching out to Public Safety Director and the Vice President to try to come to some kind of a solution that this doesn't happen and continue happening. Just wanted to give the Board a heads up about that. On that, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Next on the agenda, under Departmental Communication, Treasurer Collector, if required, approve appointment of Assistant Treasurer under Chapter 41, Section 39A, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Carminianni?
Good evening. Here we go. Good evening. We are close to a hire. Appreciate everybody's efforts getting that office back to efforts getting that office back to full sun. Um, I think tonight it would be a good idea to defer the interim appointment to the town administrator if the board so chooses. I think the original hire is, uh, is the department's job, um, but conferring the assistant treasurer, uh, status is something the board would do. So I'll defer to the town administrator for a recommendation. Or acceptance of my defer.
That's entirely the board's privacy, whether you want to delegate it to me or you want to wait till these, or if there's an appointment ready to be made. Um, it's, I think we're down to Cory. The Cory check potentially. We're down to a pre-employment physical.
Eyes to dot, tees to cross. We want to make sure that the employee coming on is...
But that, but again, that's, again, it's up to the board because it's going to be at least a week's worth of things that have to happen for us, so we'd be up against another meeting at that point.
Mr. Johnson?
To the chair, uh, so we don't want to, you know, to treasure collector's, uh, comments. We don't want to illegally, I guess, don't want to say. So it doesn't make sense to, uh, defer the town administrator so it can be acted upon for our next meeting or potentially, you know, later than that.
And if I may be reaffirmed at a subsequent meeting so that everybody has, has had a chance to, uh, to have their input. It's a formal position, absolutely.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Marcy?
So, Harrison, we'd like to hire. We're not done with the pre-employment stuff yet. So when that, you want to, want us to act on that when that happens or?
I think there's two things. There's the hiring of a new employee.
Okay.
New employee comes in, it passes, they pass muster in that we're not hiring someone we wouldn't want to hire, nothing but a, a better employee. The designation of assistant would be the formal appointment by the Board of Selectmen. So there's two separate items.
So, Mr. Chairman, why would, would we wait until everybody, like, actually we've offered the job, he accepts? He passes the stuff that we need and then we appoint them. Would that be?
You, the, the, the law is that the treasurer makes the recommendation and the board approves it, essentially.
Okay. So you'll make the recommendation after we, they pass all the Cory stuff?
Approving the appointment.
All right.
So then all the viable candidates, Mr. Chairman, all the viable candidates have been interviewed at this point?
I, I don't know exactly what we discuss in the public meeting regarding candidates. There was a candidate moving forward, uh, to, well, as of the posting of the meeting.
Just asking if all viable candidates have been interviewed up to this point, and that's all.
I don't have the answer to that. I know, I don't want to speak for the treasurer, collector, but I know they, he makes an appointment and we either...
But I understand your question. I don't have the answer. Mr. Ruda, do you have that? Do you have that answer?
No, I was not involved, Mr. Chairman, in the interviews. However, I, I think, uh, I think we've extended a few offers and they have not been accepted or the, or the candidate has moved on. Is that correct?
Part, part of the process, the original process of sending out letters and scheduling interviews a week out, this is a little bit faster of a process. The interviews, uh, the resumeses, they've been screened, have been presented, and within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, interviews have been conducted, uh, or excuse me, offers for a Zoom interview have been conducted. Uh, on the strength of those interviews, whatever group of people who've come through have been a yea or a nay, for lack of a, a more descriptive term. Uh, I believe the better candidate is moving forward right now. If that answers your question.
Mr. Chairman, just to make it clear, I just want to make sure that we'll get to that point where we have to say yes or no, that we have the strongest candidate possible out of the viable candidates.
Would I be corrected assuming treasurer, collector selected from, well, whoever's screened, the applicants are screened?
Right. So I, the, the interviews were a second, were a second, what were sent to me were sent out for, were set up a yea or a nay for, uh, an interview. And then the responsiveness after that.
Just want to make it clear again, when it comes to that point, and there's a question as to whether that's the strongest person, uh, or strongest candidate for that position. And if we don't feel that it is, and we don't accept that person, what's the next step?
Um, what is the next step? If, if, if a candidate's brought to us by any, by any department, if a candidate's brought to us and we don't approve of them, what's the next step?
Mr. Chairman, I would check with council about the next step because in most cases, this is a statutory appointment, approval of an appointment. In most cases, there's no statutory requirement that the board approve. So I would have to find out the answer, the specific answer to that question about what the next step would be.
If, if you could also find out, and I don't mean to speak for the board, but if you'd also find out what our obligations and duties are under that specifically. I've, I've read the piece. It's been some time since I've read it, but just specifically what our obligations and responsibilities are under that. Okay. Anyone want to add anything to that? Anything else?
So just, uh, promoting this, so we're not doing anything tonight. We'll wait until we hear passing. If they pass all the checks, Rich officially nominates and then we do that?
Pre-employment, pre-employment physical, Cory, and acceptance of an offer.
So we'll put this on to the next meeting?
Next.
We'll table this till the next meeting? Good? Good?
Okay.
While we're on department communication, do you have anything else?
A week ago in Webster Times, the unpaid real estate taxes have been listed out, posted in public places. Uh, they're at the library, they're at the post office. It's the collector's attestation that they remain unpaid. Um, need to be paid by ten o'clock on Friday. Uh, and I'm sure someone's going to ask the question if the town hall is closed to the public on that particular day. There will be someone downstairs, uh, until that ten o'clock, uh, timeframe to accept payments. Um, this is something that needs to be done in, uh, in good funds. We can't accept a check or anything like that, but certainly not going to slam the door at nine fifty-nine to someone who wishes to take care of what they need to.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Police chief, did you have anything else to add? Or are we good? We're good? Fire chief?
I just had one thing real quick. Um, I think beginning in April of next year, we're going to reinstitute the, um, uh, Citizens Fire Academy. We did it once in two thousand seventeen and it was well-received. It'll be limited to ten students. Um, we couldn't do it after that because we built the station and then COVID hit. And, uh, I think now is a good time to do that program. It's an eight-week program. You have to apply for it. Um, subject to a background check, it's limited to ten students, like I said, and , uh, we'll probably be starting that in April. I think it's a good opportunity to bring the community in and they actually get hands-on training and it's what they make of it. They can observe or they can actually participate, but it gives them a little idea what the fire department does on a day-to-day basis. And I think that would be a good time for this and, uh, we want to try and run it annually every year after this.
Question, you said students. Is this for, um, students like, like teenager students or is this for students of all age?
Oh, it's for any townspeople. Like, I'll give you an example. The last class, we had Debbie Thibodeau took it and, um, Joan from the finance board, Joan Gardeky participated in the class. It's just townspeople. Whoever wants to take it, they can sign up. But it is limited to ten because we have a span of control and watching people and safety issues. But if we run a class a year, we'll be able to get people through. It's just any resident that lives in the town that has an interest in, in taking the class and it gets them more educated on what we do as a fire department.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
George, do you have anything?
Yes. Just let everybody know the, um, construction's starting to wind down on, uh, the February weather area for another two weeks and we can beat the weather before it gets too cold. So that's our, that's our goal. Uh, for people out there trick-or-treating, please be aware there is still stuff in the road, appliances, water pipes, things sticking out, whatever. We can't account for every single thing, so just be cautious when they're walking in around there. Uh, there's also going to be hydrant flushing going to be going on. Going to try to get that finished off before the cold weather also. So a couple of projects happening still.
Thank you, George. Mr. Marcy?
George, one, one follow-up. That still includes, like, burying the lines in people's driveways?
They're going to pull, once those are done, they're going to pull those out. So those will be coming out. All right. So we try to grate off what they can and touch up what they can. It's all a matter of the weather conditions too, how cold it gets, how fast. Or if it warms, this is a period of warmth. So we'll take advantage of every bit we can.
Awesome. Thank you. Jeff, do you have anything? Howie Superintendent?
Um, so the same contractor that did the, uh, that's been working on the water, water contract, um, has also done some work on our first half. There's, uh, an infrastructure portion of the work that was done with, uh, up, updates to the water and sewer. There was the, the installation of the, uh, sidewalk and that was done through a, uh, community block grant. Uh, there's going to be a second phase in the spring that will happen with the resurfacing of the, uh, the roadway. Again, there's a, a berman sidewalk that was put in on one side of the roadway. Um, and that'll, that'll complete the project in the spring with another, another round of, uh, that block grant. Um, another, uh, grant opportunity has come up with Shad, Shad Streets that goes in tomorrow. Uh, Ty and Bond assisted us with putting together a, uh, concept plan and, uh, a base estimate to, uh, be able to, um, apply for that with the, uh, assistance of the CMRC, uh, CMRCP. And, um, that would add on to the, uh, Shad Streets program that, um, we'll be installing in the future, the sidewalks on Airport, Airport Road. And, uh, the intention would be eventually to bring that down to, uh, uh, all the way to Wa- West Main Street. So, um, the budget, uh, for the grant program is two hun- two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this, this round. We've already received a hundred and seventy-six thousand for the initial. So, um, that will get us towards the final goal of, uh, bringing the sidewalks all the way down there to, uh, West Main. And also the, uh, one last thing, uh, St. Anthony Road, uh, the Betterman program that we, um, have used for, uh, Patrick Hill Road as well, um, has recently completed, uh, the paving, backing up of the paving there. And, uh, there's a couple of other minor, minor items that have to happen. There's engineering and survey work with, uh, the installation of some bound points. And, uh, lastly, a street sign that'll be installed. Uh, appears as though that'll finish well within the, uh, budget and, uh, actually be able to be laid out and accept that as a town roadway in, in the spring at the, uh, the annual town meetings. That's pretty much it. And other than that, we're preparing for, uh, winter, winter season with, uh, getting the equipment ready for snow and ice control.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Uh, next up, board member comments. Mr. Johnson?
I've been open today.
Mr. Landry?
Just want to remind everybody, be careful tomorrow night with all the families out trick-or-treating around town, um, between, I believe it's five and seven. So just be careful. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Landry. Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, I was going to mention that as well. Have fun, be safe, and, um, see you soon.
Yes, tomorrow. Have fun, be safe, exactly. Um, I want to add something. I know sometimes Mr. Sullivan will say, check on, check on your neighbors, your elderly neighbors, usually when it's hot or when it's cold. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of people going through things of all ages and, uh, you know, check on everybody. Check on your, just wave hi to someone who's across the street getting the mail. Say hi to someone in parking shop. A lot of things going on. You know, we always say people are going through things you never know. Doesn't hurt to smile, say hello, or just check on someone near you. That's all I've got. Uh, next on the agenda, adjournment.
You're all set, right, Vanessa?
Oh, I'm, yeah.
I think, I think she already gave her report, but...
You're all set with the beginning?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to cut you off. Mr. Marcy?
Do we adjourn?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Everybody, good night.